How are you, sir?
Good.
You doing all right?
Yeah.
That's all right.
He's coming home with fit wear.
Are you doing, sir?
Yes, I did.
Do you have an agenda for your meeting and all that?
I sent that to you as well. Yes, sir.
It's Board Blog, January 12, 2016, and we're opening the meeting of the Citrus County School Board. Ms. Bryant will do the opening exercises and the pledge.
Good afternoon. Back when I used to teach school, many years ago, I did poems. I try to do an appropriate poem when it's my turn. So this is called "Life's Tug of War," and the author is unknown, but I like it. Life can seem ungrateful and not always kind. Life can pull at your heartstrings and play with your mind. Life can be blissful and happy and free. Life can put beauty in the things that you see. Life can place challenges right at your feet. Life can make good of the hardships we meet. Life can overwhelm you and make your head spin. Life can reward those determined to win. Life can be hurtful and not always fair. Life can surround you with people who care. Life clearly does offer its ups and downs. Life days can bring you both smiles and frowns. Life teaches us to take the good with the bad. Life is a mixture of happy and sad. So, take the life that you have and give it your best. Think positive, be happy, let God do the rest. Take the challenges that life has laid at your feet. Take pride and be thankful for each one you meet. To yourself, give forgiveness if you stumble and fall. Take each day that is dealt to you and give it your all. Take the love that you're given and return it with care. Have faith that when needed, it will always be there. Take time to find beauty in things that you see. Take life's simple pleasures and let them set your heart free. The idea is simple, to even the score as you're met and faced with life's tug of war. And I have a quote from the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. for coming up on his day. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education. Would you stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was lovely. Lessons learned. Ms. Bryant, thanks so much. Motion to the adoption of the agenda?
Move approval.
Are there any citizen comments? Would you?
I'm sorry, Madam Chairman.
I did vote, sorry. Excuse me, let me have the vote on the option of the agenda. All in favor? Yes. Passes four zero. Thank you. On the donations, did you read the donations? We'll approve the consent agenda first. May I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Move approval.
So, I guess been moved by Ms. Bryant, seconded by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Passes four zero. And now the running motion.
Madam Chairman, there's two donations on the agenda today. We have approved a thousand dollar donation to Citrus High School from Catherine Greer, and a thousand, and a donation to Crystal River Middle School from Taylor-Renthal to install a sidewalk estimated at $600 in materials, labor, and installation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wilson?
Good afternoon. I have given you a few handouts. The first thing is the budget calendar. Believe it or not, we're looking towards 16, 17. A few dates on here that are important. The first workshop that I will present some budget information to you is February 23rd. We will advertise the budget on July 23rd in the paper. Vote on it July 26th, and we will adopt the final budget on September 13th. Those are just some highlights as we move forward. The second page I've given you is just a listing of our cash and investments, where we stand right now. We did get a bulk of our tax dollars in November and December, so we're looking very healthy right now in the way of cash. I'll give you a minute to look over that.
Do we anticipate any need for a bridge note like we have in the past?
No, sir. We've made it through that time. This would have been the time when we would have needed it, and we made it through by the skin of our teeth, but we did. Any questions on the cash and investments? The next thing I've given you, the third calculation came out actually December 22nd, so the first day we went on vacation. It came out. Our numbers are up, and about 140, 140 our FTEs up about. And this increased our funding by $634,000. I'll let you look over that for a minute. Our class size dollars did increase by almost $115,000. Our sparsity did go down because our FTE numbers went up. Transportation went up because our numbers went up. Instructional materials. We are receiving the virtual education contribution again now that we have our own virtual teacher. I don't know if you remember, a few years ago, it would be on the first and second calc, then by the third calculation, it would go away. This time, the third calculation, it appeared, so we should be getting that from now on. Any questions on that? And the last page, which is our favorite page. This is our projection of where, as of right now, where I'm projecting we will stand at the end of the year after the raises have been taken into effect, the increase in the third calculation, the reduction in fuel costs. I'm looking at about 3.8 or 3.68 percent undesignated fund balance right now.
Is projected to increase?
This is what I'm projecting. The last column would be what I'm projecting where we will end up. The revised budget column doesn't take into consideration our reserves that we have to hold according to the state, so I calculate that in in the last column. Any questions on that? That's all I have for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Bishop?
This is mine. Good afternoon. I am here to ask for approval of the instructional and support recommendations as outlined in the Golden Rod.
I make a motion that we approve the instructional and support recommendations as noted on our handout, Golden Rod.
Second.
It's been moved and suggested to approve the instructional and support hires as listed on the Golden Rod. Any special? Taking that to look over and see if there's something I may ask. Okay. Take your vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Passes four zero. Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you. School operations, and who will be speaking? The school operations? Curriculum update? Okay. Our encyclopedia of information out of all of this good. Do you think you could leave your break and then just retire, or is that possible?
I think my husband would like for it. Okay. Good afternoon, board members. Today, we'd like to talk about Citrus High School and a computer science academy at Citrus High School. Refer back to the strategic plan for Citrus County schools. One piece of that says that all students will develop a foundation of knowledge and skills through a rigorous and relevant curriculum that exceeds local, state, and national expectation, closes performance gaps, and helps all students realize their full potential. And when you think about that all students and all students realizing their full potential, that begs us to offer lots of things so that all of our students can be involved in things. When you stop to think back over the last several years, and they often call me the historian of the group. You know, we've had dual enrollment as an example for many, many years within the district. And over the last several years, we've added AP courses, and we've added AP courses in all of the schools. Some have more AP courses than others, part of it being what is relevant to that particular school. We've had academies. We have the School of Art. We have at Crystal River, the Health Biomedical Academies. We have IB at Locanto. And while I'm talking about that, we also, there's a lot of questions, and often I'm asked about dual enrollment. We send a lot of our students to the CF campus, but we are working toward having more classes on campus. Right now, we offer at least two courses at each of the schools, each of the high schools. We would love to have more, but of course, we have to make sure that we have teachers that are certified and approved by the college. And that typically is a master's in that particular area, as well as 18 hours of coursework. So even though there's a lot of people that have master's degrees, they aren't always approved by the college to be able to, for their accreditation, they have to take care of that as well. So, but what we've been looking at is trying to make sure that we have our schools and have our students able to keep up with the workforce and to be college and career ready. Several years ago, the State Board added some of those acceleration mechanisms to school grades for the high school, one of those being industry certification. Within Citrus County, we have worked very diligently to get all of our career and technical programs up and moving toward industry certification. And when industry certification came into view, it was very important that we meet the standards for the industry certification. That meant we had to have all of our programs at certain software levels, that we had to have our programs to where they had the greatest and best equipment, and sometimes that was at a pretty good cost factor. But now that we have those programs up, we now look to expand. Looking to, we've looked for the last several years at expanding academies now that we have all of our programs kind of up to speed. There's been a state emphasis, and if you listen to a state school board meeting, I understand at the state board meetings that you all attend, you've heard a lot about computer coding. And that is something that we feel that it's time to bring to Citrus County in a bigger way. Several years ago, we offered computer sciences within Citrus County schools. However, from the Course Code Directory, they deleted many of the programming courses that were available to Citrus County students, and they took them out of the computer science area, and they said, "Well, you can just teach them in CTE." The problem was, they didn't add any of those courses or those course numbers to the Course Code Directory. They also looked at it as software. They just said, "Well, you'll use the software that's already been afforded to you by companies." So that, they told us in CTE and business, that we needed to teach the students how to use software, not necessarily how to write software or software-type programs. You introduce then tablets, et cetera, and now there's a call for apps, and it's, but our students should be able to write those. So that's one of the reasons that suddenly we have seen a big emphasis back on moving back to coding. For years, Citrus High School had a business academy, and as we started going through, looking at courses and academies, et cetera, as I've upgraded for industry certification, one of the things also was going on was the Citrus High School administration was looking to see what they could do to revive or redefine the business academy at Citrus High. And I'll let Mr. Hilbert talk about that in just a couple moments. But what we do want it to do is we want to offer students in Citrus County the best educational opportunity for one of the fastest-growing career fields, and that is computer science. So why computer science? It is considered a high-salary, high-growth field in Florida and within the U.S. It's a program that certainly has been encouraged by the State Board of Education. There is an easy access to professional development and resources when we do a partnership with several STEM-related agencies, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a few moments. And while there's a lot of controversy about, there is a legislation that is being introduced about making coding as a substitute for foreign language. Now whether that passes or not, that doesn't really make a difference. Computer science is here to stay. If you stop to think about, every aspect now is somehow related to computer science. You go to the doctor's office, there's a computer. You go to anything with building, et cetera, there's computers. There's computers everywhere. It is part of our life, and we really feel that we should have our students ready for that piece of their life. Mr. Hilbert?
Well, good afternoon, everyone, and if I haven't seen you, Happy New Year. As you know, this is my, my third year of being at Citrus High School, and I've always been very impressed with the staff and the students and so forth, and working through our programs educationally and so forth. So I wanted to just kind of share with you what we have done at this time. And as I see that you had that on your iPads or computers, basically what we decided to do is we got in contact with our SAC committee, our department heads, and then also the committee that we formed, to take a look at, to see what is it that we could offer as an extension to enhance students' education at Citrus High School. And basically, we did do a Survey Monkey, went out in November, and the other middle schools were very accepted of that, and we sent that out, and we got those results back. I would tell you, we offered probably six different kinds of options, and then also we gave the students an option of putting something in there. Computer science came up as one of the top choices of students, of choices at that time. The certification, if we were to go through the computer science, you can see there that they, what they can get as far as certification programs, everything from Microsoft Office to drafting, is a related area of certification. Also, can be obtained, Internet Business and so forth through that program. These are the required courses. The top three are 18-week courses. They are one-credit courses. The other three down below there are half-credit courses. So there's a total of seven, which is the computation and problem solving. And then these were what we thought would be great electives for those students, even though the digital informational technology one is one that all of our freshmen would take. I would like to just share with you, in our discussion that we had had regarding offering the computer science, we are looking for, you know, a rubric that would enable us to look at different students to enter into this program. It may not necessarily be some student that may be in one program or another program, maybe a kid that's middle-of-the-road type of a kid, that's very good at math, good computers, and those kinds of things, and that's kind of what we would be looking at at this point.
Kind of our next steps, we wanted to share with you today about what our research has brought to us and where we really are to go forward. We would like to partner with Project Lead the Way. This is a nonprofit organization that helps to establish STEM-related fields in our schools. We have worked with this particular company, or it's actually a concomitation of many, many companies, to help STEM-related fields. The great thing about Project Lead the Way, we've worked with them with biomedical at Crystal River, we worked with them with engineering. The pieces of it is that they provide training opportunities. We have a lot of wonderful, great teachers in Citrus County. But when you have something very new and very innovative, and Dr. Connors can tell you that for the students in biomedical, there's a lot of things that go on in there that even the best of the teachers would not have thought to do those things necessarily in class, but because they have been through the training that Project Lead the Way offers to us, then we can do cutting-edge things for our students. The other piece with Project Lead the Way is that they tell us the materials that we need. We love to have their training in-state right now until Project Lead the Way grows further. Typically, our teachers would have to go out-of-state for training. The other things that we need to do is to outline what type of application and student selection process, another piece of our next steps. To promote the computer science program, we would like, our kind of target starting point is to select 50 students to begin the program for the 16, 17 school year. Some things that we've talked about is attendance, behavior, academic history, and some of those pieces, not necessarily the best, the top of everything, but to make sure that we are targeting students who are truly committed to the program. We would offer digital information technology and computer science and programming next year for the students. We also want to explore volunteer internship opportunities within Citrus County for our third and fourth-year students. We believe that there's a lot of things that this program could offer out to the community through either paid or unpaid-type partnerships.
What age students are we talking about, the 50 students? Where are they coming from? 10th grade, 11th grade?
We would probably, we would start definitely with eighth graders coming in as ninth graders, and we would probably be accepting some current ninth graders as well. Because what we want them to do is to be able to finish the program before they leave. And if they started as a junior or senior, then that would be filling up slots that then others wouldn't be able to replace.
Let me follow that by asking, how do you get this to the students?
Well, that's part of our piece, is to, what type of a marketing plan? I know that the folks from Citrus have talked about developing a course for orientation. When they have their orientation night, they certainly, I'm sure, will have a lot of things to talk to the students about, of what, the who, how, what, when, and where. Once we've kind of made this decision, we're still working on, we know that we've got a lot of work to do in the next month and a half to get those pieces together.
Would you be presenting this to the other high school students, to Citrus, to the other?
And the middle.
we would like, our kind of target starting point is to select fifty students to begin the program for the sixteen, seventeen school year. Some things that we've looked, talked about is attendance, behavior, academic history. And some of those pieces, not necessarily the best and the, the top of everything, but to make sure that we are targeting students who are truly committed to the program. We would offer digital information technology and intro to computer science and programming next year for the students. We also want to explore volunteer internship opportunities within Citrus County for our third and fourth-year students. We believe that there's a lot of things that this program could offer out to the community through either paid or unpaid-type partnerships.
What age students are we talking about, the fifty students? Where are they coming from? Tenth grade, twelfth grade?
We would probably, we would start definitely with eighth graders coming in as ninth graders, and we would probably be accepting some current ninth graders as well. Because what we want them to do is to be able to finish the program before they leave. And if they started as a junior or senior, then that would be filling up slots that then others wouldn't be able to replace.
Let me follow that by asking, how do you get this to the students?
Well, that's part of our piece, is to, what type of a marketing plan? I know that the folks from Citrus have, have talked about developing a course for orientation. When they have their orientation night, they certainly, I'm sure, will have a lot of things to talk to the students about of what, the who, how, what, when, and where. Once we've kind of made this decision, we're still working on, we know that we've got a lot of work to do in the next month and a half to get those pieces together.
Would you be presenting this to the other high school students at Citrus High?
In the middle.
In the middle, excuse me. And so someone will be going over there, we presented by, they're going to tell me. Is that what you're saying?
Well, again, we don't, we don't, we're not that far, as far as how, how many students. You know, I think Mr. Hilbert's going to want to focus, first of all, on his own population at Citrus, and then we have other questions we have to answer. If you expanded to that, are you providing transportation, are you not providing transportation? You know, it's important that the program be able to walk before it runs full speed. And, and the program has to have a starting point. That's why we want to start the program. You know, we hope the program grows to a few hundred students, but we can't start day one with a few hundred students. So some of those questions may be premature at this stage, and how many students will come from other schools. I think Mr. Hilbert's first, first obligation is going to be to try to see how many students at his school are interested in that program. And they've already done some of those surveys, and they've identified some of those. So that would be our first priority.
And one of the other things to do as the program grows, by the time the students are juniors or seniors, we would also be looking at articulating the program with, could be with WTC, it could be with the other state colleges, et cetera, so that our students can get credit for what they know. The Career Pathways Program with CF. We have to be a little bit further down the road with being able to give them course outlines, et cetera. And they take a look and see what type of credit that they will give them as articulated credit. There's also articulation statewide that if a student passes certain industry certifications, that they can receive credit at the state college system as well. Some estimated program costs as we go through this. We would pay a $2,500 participation fee with Project Lead the Way, but what we would get for that $2,500 is all of the software that we are needed with, for the program. That includes, I believe, four different type of software that will help to, help us with writing the computer programs, et cetera. And the funding source from that would be through the Perkins Funds for CTE expansion. Approximately $5,000 staff training in the summer. That is typically out-of-state travel that we can pay for through the district cake funds. Approximately $10,000 to $15,000 for Android tablets with Python, Python software for writing code that could come from the vocational capital outlet. The reason for the Android tablets, the Apple has proprietary software, and they do not allow as access to be able to do. What the software that we have would be on desktops, and students would write apps, et cetera. And then the Android tablets themselves would be for the students to test their apps in the classroom. It is recommended as two students per one Android tablet. So an estimated seventeen-five to twenty-two-five estimate, estimation for our first-year cost. Many of the things would still be, there would not be as much reoccurring. Training, of course, would be, we would have a participation fee because each year for, until we get the program established. If we decided that we would provide busing, et cetera, for out-of-zone students, that cost is to be determined because we don't know exactly how many students, and we don't know where they live, et cetera, and whether or not that would already be something that would be a transportation cost as just two students on a bus, two or three students more on a bus. That is already going.
But wouldn't you agree that that is the goal or the plan, long-range, is to have this as an academy that's offered to all incoming high school students in the county? Wouldn't that be?
That's what this board has to decide.
Well, I mean, is that what the administration? I mean, that sounds to me like that's where we're going, is to be a law from academy, just like we do with the Health Academy at Crystal River High School, where any student in the county can go to that Health Academy, just like we offer the IB program at La Canto High School. Any student in the county can go to the IB program. I would certainly like to hope that any student in the county eventually would be able to go to the Computer Science Academy at Citrus High School, so.
And I think Mike, though, when I was asking that question earlier, he said, "We have to wait and see how it progresses at Citrus High before we jump, you know, the gun there and."
Absolutely.
So when we see how it progresses, if it makes, it looks like it's going well, then there's another step that we can take.
We would not, we wouldn't keep kids from going, from wanting to go to that. You know, allowing students to go back and forth with programs. We have students going to La Canto for art because they want to go to the Art Academy. We have students going to Citrus High because they want to take drafting there. So we have that, we would not deny that, students wanting to go there. You know, the question is, are we going to try to recruit heavily from all the other schools to go to that program? I would not say right now that that's going to be the top priority, is to recruit, to get 200 kids in there. And that is going to be to start that program, get a good foundation, and get all, everything in place before we do that.
The difference is, is whether we're talking about an academy or a magnet program, and they are different models. A magnet program is what IB is. Magnet program is what the Health Academy became. The Health Academy existed as an academy for, I think, well over a decade before it really moved into being a magnet program. If we are looking at simply adding a magnet program to Citrus High because there's some equitable reason, I think that's a very different question, and one that has to then involve things like, as Mr. Mullin stressed, we have capacity issues that have to be then looked at. We have to look at impact of other programs, including other magnet programs that could be potentially impacted. I think what has been appealed here, and that was a question that I had, was are we talking about an academy or a magnet program? Because in academy, we have at many of our schools, and I, I hope that a computer science, as I think the state has shown, and as I think the need is, a lot of these are things that I think we're going to see that our other high schools are going to be adding these programs, just like Crystal River has a business academy, just like Citrus High had a business academy. Crystal River has a drafting academy, Citrus has a drafting academy, because they need to service their students. And the broadest way of doing that is by having these programs there. There's usually two reasons why a magnet school is put at a specific school. One is the location, as we found with IB, it was centrally located. The other reason is a situation on Crystal River where in biomed, when we added that to the Health Academy, there was a need to increase the capacity and the draw into Crystal River High School because frankly, we had a, a large number of students at La Canto and at Citrus High. So I think, I mean, this is exactly, as we know, right on target of the things that our students need. But if we're talking about an academy or a magnet school, sometimes that's going to be a very different conversation, I think, as a board level, that we're going to be having. And I will be, we're going to know that until we start seeing the success that Citrus High has with their program.
I don't think any of us would deny that all of the schools may, at some point in time, want to offer computer science classes in their schools, especially depending upon what legislation, et cetera, does. But I, I do believe that it is very wise to start at one school, make sure that we are successful there, and then either expand at that particular school or bridge out to others.
Well, we're not going to know that until really Citrus High starts doing some of theirs.
Correct, until we know, you know, right now, we're hoping for a couple hundred applications, or at least to fill our fifty spots. You know, we might be bombarded with applications, we might not.
Well, that, that brings up a great question, though. What does this student look like?
That's what, one of those things, if you notice.
I see it there, but I'm hoping that you all have given that some thought.
We've had several pieces, several conversations about. That's one of our next steps, is to sit down and to, to clearly identify what type of rubric. And that's, our goal is to have a rubric to be able to judge pieces of. We have collected the Health Academy application. We have collected the IB application, what the positives, et cetera. Also have an application from a, a school that is working on computer science in Marion County. So I want to pull all of those pieces together so that we can outline. I think Mr. Bittner will tell you from the very first time that we outlined what we originally thought for the IB students that the next year. We definitely modified that a little bit further because we want to make sure that the students that we have are successful in the program because we know that sometimes that first face of the students going through, we want them to have a positive experience. We don't want to unduly take students out, but we also want to make sure that it's something that all students that we put in have the opportunity to be successful.
One of the things, though, that it looks like, or that concerns me, and that I hope we look at, is we have the IB program, which is targeting students that are headed to college. We have the Health Academy that has, again, it's changed. I think initially, it was, I would say that it was more career-oriented, but I think over the years, that's become more of a college pathway. The students that are going there typically are going on to college. We have the Academy of Environmental Science, and most of those students are students that are going on to college. So the only thing that, that I, again, I would say is if we're looking at magnet programs, or even if we're just looking at programs, my concern is that we also provide opportunities for the 30% of our students that aren't going to college, but are going directly into a career. And that's really where computer science really seems to be a very targeted group that are going directly into the workplace. I, I would say that, that if we are looking to develop another program for college-bound, or predominantly college-bound students, that makes me a little nervous that we are leaving out a, a large segment.
I didn't see it as a program specifically for college bound, I saw it.
I won't say it specifically for that, but I don't want to say we have a program that's not for college bound because even WTC is a program that's for college-bound students. Even though it's a vocational school, it's, students that are college-bound can take electives and get certification in the fields that they're interested in through WTC. So even though I do agree that we, it is a program by which students can go straight into the workforce, certainly if there are students that want to go beyond that, kind of like with the Health Academy. There are students that leave the Health Academy that can go straight into the workforce. And then there, there are those that want to major in that at college and go one step further, or go to college while they're going through the workforce. We talked about that earlier. So I see it as both. I don't, I don't know that it would be one more than the other.
Academic history was the, it didn't, it seemed too ominous. Was it something, you know, and that's why I say, what does the person look like? Is this, that we're looking for that kid that, you know, is, is, you know, and I can say this being mill, maybe a little bit of that kid is the geek who's, you know, computer-minded and is, and is really right now more interested in developing an app than they are necessarily putting in a college application?
And that's some of the things that we want to try to figure out, how to put that mold. The academic history, the only, what we're really saying when we said that is to just really take a look at that student. One thing that we've learned, any time that we've had a computer-type program, back even several years ago, if you're going to go with programming, you have to have a student who understands what parentheses are all about in math. So you're probably letting a student, looking at a student that has some math ability, and we're trying to define that right now. One of the things, we've talked about in essay, to try to see where the students are really looking at. We're not saying that it has to be the student who's already done all of Algebra I and Algebra II and Geometry by the time they get to high school. That's not what we're actually saying. But what we're saying of it is, if a student has, is a DF student, and unless we can figure out that there's a way to turn that particular student on, then we want to make sure that we are giving opportunities to students who want to be there.
I would think that this program would be welcomed by both students that are looking to go on to college, and those who are going to possibly find a job, a vocational-type program. And I would hope the program would be tailored to both those types of students.
If you, why don't you go along to the.
I'm going to continue because we're interrupting your presentation. Go ahead.
Before we go on, there's several different names of, of jobs, but the next slide, and it's a little bit hard to see, but what we did was we took the job titles from, and this comes directly from the state, and looked at the percentage change in need, and this is put out by the Economic Development Council, of what change, and all of those, you'll notice, are positive change in the requirements in the next eight years. Also, the number of job openings in Florida in the next eight years. The average hourly wage, and this was done last year, so that's how much per hour that the students are made. And then the education level required. And you will notice that the majority of the things that are listed here are not necessarily four-year college, and, and we understand that. Are there some students available to get a job right out of high school? Probably, because having an industry certification is a very strong piece of it as well. With the number of job openings and the unfilled jobs currently out there, if you have an industry certification, you already have one foot in the door. In some cases, what happens is businesses are so desirous of having the students, that they would then help them to even further their education. So we really think that, you'll notice, not every one of those is bachelor and master's degrees. And I went through and truly looked at what type of jobs. And I can tell you that with all of the things that we looked at for Citrus High School, that wasn't the case for everything else that we looked at. I mean, truly, computer science, and that was one of the reasons that we really focused on computer science, was it is for the students who just want a little bit more of education. If you look at it now, they estimate between 85 and 90% of the jobs that are going to be available in the next eight years are going to have to have some type of training beyond high school. We know that that's a fact, okay? So what we want to do is give the students a leg up. As I said, we want to have the Career Pathways Program so that what they learn in high school, that they can get credit for it, and then be able to walk into. But I certainly would think that any of the jobs which are paying anywhere from $26 to almost $40 an hour, they would be very happy to be able to do.
And you and I know, because we've served on CTE committees now for a number of years, and this is certainly more of the lines. And that's, this is exactly what I'm really saying, is if this is a model of the type of students you're trying to look for, it's a cross-section. It doesn't really meet, it's, it's a more broader net. And that encourages me in that. So that's, that's really what I was trying to understand. Because when I see academic history, and I see, you know, what we're trying to do, the business academy that you were, in essence, trying to revitalize or replace was an academy, I think, that largely did that. It was, it wasn't just going after college-bound kids, it was a mixture. It was, it wasn't just going after college-bound kids, it was a mixture. And so that, to me, is an appropriate replacement to that.
But like I said, we want to focus on jobs that we know that have a growth of 30, anywhere from 12 to 20% or more. And we wanted it to be in Florida. We didn't want it to look at that you have to go outside of the state. So that was our other prime focus.
And I think, Mr. Hilkert, you correct me. I do think they're prepared to entertain students from other schools that are interested in the academy next year, in their first year. So they're not pulling that out. But again, we're trying to start with a smaller number so we get things in place correctly. And then later on down the road, if there's 600 students interested in this type of a program, then we'd be crazy not to run it at more than one high school. But right now, we have to build a demand, and once the demand's built, then we will meet that need.
And I think as you started, it said that you were looking for a replacement to the business academy, which was there previously. That's an infrastructure that, again, we had business academies at other schools. Some schools, it makes more sense than it does at other schools. One question, though, that I have is, you talked about courses, and you mentioned seven courses that they would be required. I'm trying to figure out how that fits into a schedule, or how many courses is a student going to take?
Several of those are half-credit courses. So it would be that they would take two half-credit or maybe three half-credit courses during their year. The first year, as we said, we are targeting two credits, trying to get the students in, get them moving. The next year, probably two, and then some of the half-credit within an option for a senior year, kind of capstone-type program. Again, as we go, we've got to build.
Okay, wait a minute. At 5:00, we have a presentation, so it's about eight minutes before then.
I basically am done, other than any questions, et cetera, that you have.
Okay, was anyone else going to present? Or Jeff, you're the president.
This is for information purposes and to answer any questions and to go back and get any more information than any board members want us to do. At this point, you know, the only commitment would be from the board, we're on the right track, would be, there is, you can see there is some funding tied to it. So from budget purposes, is the board supportive of us going in this direction? Will continue to move in this direction? Because you will have to approve a budget in July or September, the 2-1 process by which we allocate some resources. And you saw what we anticipate those resources to be on the PowerPoint.
I'd say, Gil's been working on this for years. This is not something that was started last week, so...
No, but in 2009 and '10, we weren't looking at anything. We were looking to try to...
Correct.
It's been a rough few years.
We were desperate.
So we're starting to come out of that, so now we're a charter...
We see that. We see what you've been doing for so long. And I would think other board members are wanting to see the fruition here, to explore.
I'm very excited about this. I think it's right on track.
I knew you would be.
You heard me talk about this for Citrus High School, and I'm just glad to know the work that's gone into it. Mr. Hilkert and staff are all here, and they're supportive of this. And we're going to meet a need for all of our students, I hope eventually in this county, dealing with computer science and technology. And I'm just, I'd like to thank you guys for putting all this work into this program. One question I do have is, do you foresee these computer science classes being open for all students at the high school, or will it just be for those in the academy? I think that'll completely depend upon enrollment. Students in academy will have a priority, but again, if we have, we have space in a classroom and a student has the prerequisites to get in that classroom, we would never keep a student from having an opportunity to take those courses. Because if we were to offer an AP computer science class and there were available seats for other students, obviously that'd be the way to go. We survive by keeping classrooms full. That's how we, that's how we make a living. So if we don't have 20 kids in our, in the academy that want to take an AP class, and we have 15 and five or 10 more from outside the academy, there would be no reason not to allow them to take that course, as long as they had the prerequisites to take it. And also the FTE funding for industry certifications, there is some funding that is available for...
When a student passes an industry certification, depending upon whether or not it is either, it's going to be a Point 1 or a Point 2, and that is basically dependent upon whether or not it has a state articulation agreement for that industry certification. So that's the piece of it. So as the students pass, then that will also help for students to help generate funds. And they, the industry certification has to be on the CAPE list. And then the same thing of it is, you talked about the AP courses, of course, if a student receives a 3, 4, or 5, then that was also be funding to come back to. And that, specifically with CAPE, it has to be spent on the program that earns it. So that's a very strong piece of it. As I said, in the last several years, Mr. Blocker has taught me well, that make sure that whatever we're proposing, that we have funds. And now that we have the industry certification programs up to par, then we have a little bit more of our Perkins' funds to be able to, to be able to work toward getting something started in another school. And, and each of the schools, that's the piece that we're trying to do, is make sure that we have solid foundation before we move forward.
Well, thank you, good morning. I just have, I just have something, too. And I know we have time, certain, but the concern, too, is, is that as we add these, what do we lose at a school in order to start another class? So if we're having AP computer science, and that's not a question for today, but the cognizant of what classes then, you know, we're not adding staff, I'm assuming then that means that there may be a course that we have to drop as a result of it. That's not necessarily wrong, that just may be that there's a more appropriate course. And then the other thing, I think, board, that we have to be very cognizant of is that if this develops into a more magnet program, we have some big things coming down the pipe. IB, for example, we may find that that's going to become an IB school because that's the necessity that's coming forward. That's going to be a cost to this board that we're going to have to look at. We also are finding that there's a number of our students that are stopping after PIPs. They're not going into IB. And so our model of funding has changed there. I'm not saying that that's a bad thing, but that is also a little different than the model we currently have, and we need to look at that. Thank you very much for that input. Okay. Gil, thank you so much, too. For all the years you've worked on this, and we'll see what's happening in the future. Okay, that, Ms. Phillips just came in a few minutes ago, so we were, we were planning to see what we could do if you did not show up, and I was going to do it, and also Polly was going to do it, so now Polly has your rewards. Tell the group here that, this is Connie Phillips, she was a teacher at La Canto Art School for many, many years. And I was about eight years the liaison between the students, art students, and the Arts Festival. Connie, by Kevin, took over that position, or is taking it over for the future. And so this is her first appearance before you to, as the liaison, and she's going to present some awards to the students who received the Awards of Excellence. And Sam and I are going to go up and stand with you, too, so we're not going to do anything. We're just going to stand.
I would like to say that in my experience, working for the school system for 30 years, I feel very honored to be here now because I very quickly learned, because I got very active statewide, very quickly learned how much support there is in this county for the arts. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate it, and I always felt it. I always felt that I was supported, and I really appreciate that. And I think that we're an exceptional county. I really do. So, yes, after Linda wrangled me into taking her place on the Festival of the Arts Committee, I'm now the school liaison. And we have this program, this wonderful, we developed this wonderful program about, rather than giving the kids first, second, and third place awards, we have hired judges to come in from University of Florida, or sometimes South Florida, University of South Florida. And they go through and they put these awards, we call them Awards of Excellence, because they have selected these pieces saying that these are worthy to be, let's talk about these, let's critique these. And then after lunch, we go up and we have this wonderful critique, and Sam has been there for it, and Linda's been there, and it's just such a wonderful experience, and we've turned it into this huge learning experience. And I'm very, very proud of this program. So I wanted to call, have Chris take pictures for us, and I'm going to recognize all the art teachers at the high schools and have them come up. And we'll start with La Canto High School. So David Brown, and Polly Hilkert, and Bill Rubar. Anybody who's here can come up. And should I have maybe come do, give out this picture because this is...
You can, anybody, you can call the names, you can call them.
Okay, and the students, the La Canto High School's artists, Jake Clark, Deng Hui, Emma Holmes Ray, Ashton Horace, Keely Rice, Kate Cisco, and Zoe Cericy, and Ally Thomason. And I asked the students if it was possible for them to bring their artworks that they were, received the Awards of Excellence on.
Where are you getting the...
I don't really get the... Okay, he's getting his artwork. Lifted it apart. Okay, from Citrus High School.
Wait, wait, wait.
You want to La Canto picture first, and then all of Cisco wants?
He's covering back.
And Sidney Butts?
Chris, you want some of the middle?
He's got it. She just went a bit closer to the gear.
Okay, and I'm sorry, and I left out Sidney Butts. Okay, can we get y'all to look this way and go up, please? Yes, look at the photographer.
One more, one more.
Okay, and can we keep them up here because...
Yes.
Because we can have them sit down.
Yes, we can.
Okay, and after, I'm not sure how many of the others are here. Citrus High School, Nancy, the teachers are Nancy Boudreaux and Philip Jurney. And the students are Savannah Boudreaux, and Tegan Hennig, and Andrea Lundreno. How did I do all that? Okay. Okay. And I'm thinking we could get...
Why don't we do separate school shots?
All right, I just, okay.
All right, we've got La Canto, so why don't we do Citrus High?
Okay, Mr. Gamber wants to do separate school shots, so...
You've already got La Canto.
So thank you, La Canto. Okay. And then, Mr. Hilkert is standing in for his art teacher.
Well, I've got a couple others, Mr. Hilkert.
Oh, good. You'll have to...
They're pretty odd, aren't they?
And the administrators. And then, Crystal River High School, the art teachers are Ally Wright and Tony Mason. And the student there was Josephine McMullin. I don't believe our... Okay, we had nobody from Crystal River, so, but they asked Josephine McMullin to receive the Awards of Excellence. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The last thing, I would like to say thank you to the school board, Sam Himmel, and the Citrus Education Foundation for supporting the arts, and especially for the big tents. Years ago, art teachers, you would have to go in Saturday mornings, set up, and sit there all day and tuck down, and the festival wanted us to come up, set it up for two days. We said, we're chilling sauce, and we can't do it two days. So they came and said, well, how could you do it for two days? And we said, well, it'd be a tent. So the Citrus Education Foundation and Sam Himmel, they come up and got us some tents. And now we go and we set up on Friday, leave it up all weekend, and it's just wonderful. And so I hope that next November, everybody can stop by and see the schools.
Connie, thank you so much. And Connie's been such a big part of art in this county. She's the guru of art. Thank you. Connie, how's your daughter doing?
Not bad.
Not yet. She's delivering a baby. Connie's, I hope Connie adds to that.
Ms. Powers, we're not finished with our curriculum update.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Simon would like to briefly explain the action that took place at the State Board in relationship to the school grades and that criteria.
Look, Mr. Simon, wait five minutes, then five-minute recess, and then we'll be right straight back. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.